Take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve agendas presented.
Second.
No, I, there's some changes that need to be made to the agenda.
I don't even have.
Kirk, were you going to make those?
Yes, I understand that there's members of the council, there was, I think I asked, request that to be added to the agenda, so make a modification for mayor, town council comments.
Comments.
I'll make some comments on behalf of the mayor.
I'm sorry, Bobby, I thought that change had already been made, but see, it has not, so I approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second, I already seconded.
Ms. Zeidman?
Wait, Bobby, do you?
Well, I mean, are we still going to be able to, I also thought that Kirk was going to give the same kind of message.
Well, he is, I mean, he is.
That's not on the agenda.
Okay, so let's add that, that's a good idea.
Okay, the fact that we would be holding this meeting and anybody would think that the town manager wouldn't be making comments is.
Well, no, but it's a rather lengthy, you know, I mean, it's, he actually wrote it.
Yeah, I don't know what happened, it might have slipped through the cracks, but if you all approve, I'll be given a situation update.
Yes, we, I.
We do want a situation update that we can react to.
I mean, that is the purpose of the meeting, okay.
Okay, so, let me, let me, let me change my motion, everybody, be calm. We will amend the agenda to include mayor and town council comments, as well as an update from the town manager.
Second.
Thank you, Julie.
Ms. Zeidman?
Yes.
Ms. Arskog?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Crampton?
Aye.
Ms. Moore? Yes, it is my goal that we be out of here as quickly as possible, so if we can all remember that, the council chambers are also empty, which is a very good sign, which means people are actually listening to what we've asked, and for those listening online, just so you know, that the council members are all separated by at least six feet throughout the chamber, so we're not technically where we should be, as far as the desk is concerned. Do I see any communication from citizens? No, I'm going to go to Kirk.
I'll make some comments on behalf of the mayor, she couldn't be here today.
The mayor is here.
Mayor just arrived. Hi, Gail. Good morning.
Do you want to start, Gail, or do you want to let someone else go?
No, it's fine. I believe the goal of the council and the town manager, from the very beginning, and thanks to Daryl and public safety, was to be proactive, was to be prepared. I am actually very proud of our community for doing that, we're probably three to four weeks ahead of the rest of, frankly, Florida. The measures that have been put in place, we have tried to be balanced with protecting and ensuring the safety of our residents, and, on the other hand, protecting the economic impact that we all foresee coming. However, I believe at this point, it is critical, we have a critical window at this point, to hopefully contain what I think is now at a port, at a spot that we could go too far with this virus. If we call this uncharted territory, without a doubt, it is a Florida storm that we have never experienced or not prepared for, however, if we're smart enough to take the lead of countries around the globe, we can see clearly where they are at this point, and be prepared to not hit that wall. My feeling at this point is the town of Palm Beach has done a very good job in messaging to our community and creating a situation that we can very carefully go forward, but at this point, I believe we need leadership across the bridge. I have spoken with our liaison at the governor's office, I have spoken with our liaison at the White House, I have spoken with Mayor Dave Kerner in Palm Beach County, worked with Verdinia, Palm Beach County Administrator, and Keith James, mayor of West Palm Beach, including Richard Radcliffe, who is the director of the Palm Beach County Legal Cities. We must have a coordinated, comprehensive action plan. To believe that we can isolate the town of Palm Beach, I believe in my mind is nonsense. We need to have across-the-board measures in place that protect every community, and frankly, every community from one another. I will continue to work behind the scenes, or frankly, in front of that, however it requires, so that the town of Palm Beach remains safe, but we set up a scenario that, as I explained yesterday to one of our officials, in my mind, mitigation is no longer the word to use. Mitigation is a very early effort to control something. We are now at the point that we need to protect by containment. What that means as a comprehensive effort, I can't tell you, but I am looking for additional support from around the county, the state, and the nation. So if you have anything that you think would be helpful in that respect, I am totally on board for any kind of suggestions. The resolutions that are in front of us today have been the leaders around the county, and all of them want to know, what is the town doing now? And I have forwarded our COVID alerts, which no municipality has yet in place, and this legal language. Well, how can you do this? Why are you, why did you do it so quickly? And frankly, the conversation this morning was, there probably wouldn't be as much attention or, I won't even say the next word, attention on this had the town of Palm Beach not taken the lead. So again, be smart, be safe, be prepared. I can't tell you what that's going to mean long-term, but be prepared. The conversation that there is an economic impact, without a doubt, is accurate, but the economic impact, if this is not very quickly controlled, will be exponential and put the Florida and the nation in territory that we've not been for way, probably almost 100 years. So I'm asking each of us to be proactive, be good ambassadors to the community, give a message that's clear, that's consistent, that's calm, and ask them as well to self-regulate at this point, until we get to a level that we won't have to help one another regulate. Done.
Thank you, mayor, I'm going to yield my time to Maggie. Or whoever, if you would like to go next, Maggie, if not.
Kirk, is that okay with you?
Or would you like to go first, Kirk? Perhaps it's easier for Kirk to provide the situation report, and then we can go.
I'll go suggest that I end last with the situation report, that we handle these, the ordinance and the resolution and the housekeeping items, you all make your comments, and then I give a little more of a in-depth overview of where the town's plans and actions are at this moment.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, Gail, because you are absolutely on target, and thank you for, because you've really reached out to everyone whom you need to reach out to. You've done that as our mayor, and you're protecting us. And you are too, Kirk, with what you sent out yesterday in the COVID-19 alert. Anybody listening, please get on, please make sure your friends, you're on already, but make sure your friends are on the alert system for COVID-19. We are not going to have the opportunity to, to, to see each other, I'm going to tell you that right now, we're not going to have that opportunity. So you need to be communicated with, and the only way to do that, it's just like the hurricane, only this is much worse, which I'll get into in just a second, but you're going to need to have the ability to hear what's going on here in town hall. Communication, communication, communication. So town hall, our town manager will be connecting with you on a daily basis, and the COVID-19 alerts will go out on a daily basis, and have been since last Saturday. Okay, I may seem a little disjointed, it's because we're all running as fast as we can, if you think back three weeks ago, I was doing a video on washing your hands, for God's sake, and telling people to wipe off surfaces. We've moved rapidly into a very, very dangerous period of time, and I, people will think I'm overstating, I'm not overstating it. If you do not, if we do not, take all of the precautions seriously, and I mean every single one of them, which includes staying at home, don't go out with people. Someone wrote to me last night, want to go to the Sal Fish, are you kidding me? No, I do not. Everybody's got to take this very seriously, clubs, restaurants, restaurants have been doing a great job, clubs, well, you hear what I'm saying. So we are in a three-day lag behind the medical community, the medical community, if you watch what they say, hear what they say, Dr. Burks is fabulous, Dr. Fauci is fabulous, I know Mass General has been in the lead on this, Seattle certainly has been, but we are in a three-day lag, but watch the language, and you'll get the picture. The mayor has called for a shutdown, or a lockup, whatever you want to call it, it means we're not connecting with each other in our usual way, and that we must stay in our homes. If we don't do this, it's predicted by the CDC that we are 10 to 14 days behind Italy. You are going to see a rapid descent into a hell, and I'm not kidding about that. People are going to need to be on ventilators, and it's not pretty, and it's not a good way to go out of this world. You have to do it now. Don't have contact with people you don't know, Kirk looks healthy to me, I look healthy to him, he doesn't know if I'm COVID positive or not. Don't be around other people, that's how it spreads. It's virulent, it's contagious. Just don't do it. We've got to stop this, you have to get it through your heads. When I say a rapid descent into hell, I'm not kidding. You can, you can listen to a podcast that I think all, all of us up here have listened to, but I suggest that you do listen to it. They've interviewed, it was a New York Times podcast, you can look it up, Dr. Fabiano DiMarco, he's a doctor at the University of Milan, he is a respiratory specialist, so he's in the ICUs, you need to listen to this, you need to hear what goes on. There, my own daughter is, and son-in-law, just as a personal side here, just so you get it, if Jesse were to get sick and be in the ICU and be intubated, I cannot see her, that's what happens. You don't want to go there, you don't want to get sick. And young people, be very careful, you all look very, very well, but you're not, you're carrying COVID-19. You cannot go, I suggest you, I recommend, that you not be around your grandparents, I recommend that you do not go up and hug them, et cetera, et cetera. Look at the CDC website, I don't need to repeat it all now, but I know this is strong language, but if we don't start paying attention to it, we are not, and we may already be a little late, but we've done what we can, and I applaud everybody for that, but continue it. It's not necessary to go out to dinner, in a couple of months, you can go out to dinner again. It's not lost on me the economic impact, but would, will be lost our lives, and you need, you really need to think about that. So I also want to point out that the heroes here, our town manager, the president of the council, this council, I think we are, the real heroes are the people who are going to be on the front line, and some of them are in this room, our chiefs, Chief Donato, Chief Caristo, all the paramedics, all the police, the nurses, the doctors, so those are the heroes, because they're going to go every day and be, they are in contact with this virus, every single day, so I want to thank you for that. It's not lost on us.
Okay.
I think that's the end of my remarks.
Maggie, then I'm going to go. Julie, Bobby, and Lou.
Just thank you, Maggie, just to tag on to what Maggie was talking about with not going out, I just wanted to remind people that I certainly, I've self-isolated now for seven days. I, look, it's not fun, I'd like to see my parents, I'd like to see my little sister's in town with her kids, I'm not doing it, you know, we're all being put in an uncomfortable situation, it's something that's foreign to us, we're a very tight-knit community, and we like to say hi to each other, we like to go out with each other, but it's very important right now to stop this spread, and the only way to stop a peak, as Maggie said, is to stay home. One of the things I would also say, I know people need to get out and exercise, people are biking, people are walking, I would like to hear from Kirk or from the police chief or Maggie, as to what's the best etiquette, because I've had people come right up behind me and right next to me, I've had bike, people on bicycles do that, and I think it's important to remember when you're walking or you're biking, that you need to still keep that six feet, because you don't know if you have it. This morning on the news, they said that 35% of the cases that are in ICU are young people under the age of 65, that's what they term young. Remember that, France, 50% in the ICU, again, young people. So this is not just an old person's disease, while they don't tend to die, it is very, very bad, and they get into serious situations and do end up in the ICU. Yesterday, I was out walking my dogs, and there were eight teenagers, they had Ubered in, they were at the beach, they were all hanging out together, and I just also asked the parents, your parents, you can keep control of the kids, and it's important for you to set an example. It's really important that you not have your kids in big groups right now, they will take it to other people, as Maggie said, so many will have it and not know, so please don't put other people in danger, please stay home, keep your kids home, you can keep them active doing things, I certainly, my sister-in-law is in town with, with my brother and, and my little sister and her kids, they're keeping them active, but they are not, they're isolating them, they're not putting them with other children, who will then take it home to the grandparents and the parents, so please follow this. I also want to say that I've had a lot of phone calls about our hotels, I highly applaud Paul Leoni and the Breakers. I have to say, they're leading in an incredible way, and residents are asking, we have hotels in our town, and Kirk, this will be one you could answer, we have hotels in our town, people are trying to escape all these other areas, and they're coming here. Is there anything that we will do or can do to, and when would the time period be, that we stop and say, no more of people coming in, because that's how, as you know, this spreads. Those are questions that are being asked, if someone could answer that. I also would like to say that I hear, I still know of several people who are giving big parties. They're giving parties at home, they think that'll be fine, not a good idea. The governor said 10 people at the most. There is a person who's been on the news, who went to a dinner party with seven people, I think she said, seven, they all got it. So I think we really, as Maggie said, have to take the next two months, don't go out, don't go to places, please, clubs, close, and do takeout. So many have done that, and I applaud them, and I hope that others will follow, I think there are only two clubs now that aren't doing that, and I think it's time that we take this very seriously, there are going to be economic impacts, but the bottom line is, what we have to do is stop this from surging, and we as a town can lead that, and we all have to take responsibility. And the last thing I'd like to say is that I think it's really important for all neighbors, especially if you know someone's alone, maybe you could get their email address, in condominiums, have a person that people can call if they're out of food, if they need help, of course, you don't want to get next to them, you need to have that six-foot space, but at least so that we all know that our community members are okay. I did hear about someone who couldn't get food, we were able to work that out, so I really recommend that people do that. Any big questions for emergencies, you can call the rumor hotline, but I'll turn it over to Bobby.
Okay. And just to, council members who are aware, you know, I think, for the sake of not contaminating ourselves, is, let's plow through the meeting, thank you.
Thank you. First, I do want to commend our staff for the superb work they're doing in this effort. I also want to recognize my colleague Maggie Zeidman for her tireless efforts on being the face of this desk on so many of these issues, and thank you to the mayor also for the work you're doing across the bridge, and up in Tallahassee. I believe in my, I believe we've reached a pivotal point in this country, where if action to contain this virus is not taken immediately, many will die unnecessarily, and we will experience the chaos and tragedy of our friends in Italy. The average age in Palm Beach is 68, we have a population on our island that's more vulnerable to this virus than others in the state and nation. The majority of serious and fatal cases of COVID-19 are in older people. As of this morning, there are five cases in Palm Beach, tomorrow there will likely be 10. This is a war against a deadly invisible enemy. Most of us have never been in a war. In a war, we must all make sacrifices, as well as bold and tough decisions that hurt commerce, cause personal inconvenience, and severely disrupt our daily lives, but they must be done for our own protection. Europe now has more cases than China and more deaths, 82,000 cases and 3,400 dead. What does that tell us? When the virus is out of control, there is only one option, and, and there's no testing available like South Korea had, there is only one option, that is containment, shelter in place, you've heard it, lockdown, many various ways of saying that. Nine million people in six counties in the Bay Area of California are sheltering in place. In my opinion, Palm Beach needs to do the same. We need to isolate our vulnerable island, close all non-essential businesses, and remain home, as my colleagues have said, except to go to the grocery store, the bank, and seek health care. We simply must resist the urge to mingle with other people. We must restrict access to the island, only allowing residents and their families and essential service workers. I know that this is difficult to take action, I worry, and I will state it, that we should continue to find a way to take action now, because relying on bureaucracies much larger and less nimble than ourselves may, may cause unnecessary deaths. I urge my colleagues and the town manager to be bold, we need action today. Lastly, I'll just simply say that our, our plan to flatten the curve and our, our commitment to try to do that is still the right plan, it just has to be implemented, and we can't implement it without containment at this point. We town leaders will not be remembered for what we did to contain this disease, but we'll be remembered for what we didn't do and should have. Thank you.
May I ask Bobby one question, was it five in Palm Beach or five in Palm Beach County?
Palm Beach.
Palm Beach.
Thank you.
Lou, and then, let's, let's get this meeting rolling, I think the longer we stay, the more uncomfortable we all are, so, Lou.
Yeah, I mean, again, congratulations and respect to all. I agree with the seriousness of the situation, as both Bobby and Maggie and Julie, for that matter, have all stated, but I'm not sure that it makes sense for us to go it alone on a shelter-in-place idea. Frankly, I think that the authorization for that needs to come from a higher authority, perhaps the president, perhaps the governor of the state, but I think that's important. I'm going to focus, Mike, the rest of my comments on the emergency, the state of emergency resolution. Basically, I think that if we do something like this, that needs to have time limits on that period, a sunset period, whether it's five days or six days, whatever, I think we should be clear on the criteria under which a state of emergency ought to be called. Shelter-in-place is, is pretty tough medicine, and perhaps that's right for the times, but a lot of people aren't so sure about that. Moreover, what process of consultation will the staff make, I guess it's the chief of police and Kirk, with the council on this kind of thing? There are all kinds of rumors and all kinds of panic in our town, as we know, and rumors that the council authorized this or that action by a vote of five to nothing, when we've done nothing of the sort. The town manager has made these decisions, it's, it's been his right to do so, and the decisions are good decisions, although I would have liked to wade in with him on, on a couple of them, but I'm part of the team, and I'm, I'm behind, I'm behind that, but there ought to be a process for us, we are the residents of this town, the people who are making these decisions, with all due respect, and I have the highest respect for Kirk, my evaluation says that, he's not a resident, nor the rest of the people, we're the ones that would be living all on our own little island, and, and putting up with the vicissitudes of something called shelter-in-place. I know what that is, because I've lived in it, it's not that easy. Our role isn't to engage in the minutiae of administration and management, that's Kirk's job, but we are the elected policy people, we are the so-called board of directors of this town, and we have a role to play, and we need to know what's going on, and I felt totally unaware of this shelter-in-place idea. To me, that, that puts us way ahead of where we need to be, so, it, we, we, as, as the mayor said, I agree with the two things she said, we need to be part of a coordinated plan. A coordinated plan means that there are other government agencies that we have to, we have to cooperate with. We can't isolate the town of Palm Beach on something like this, and I agree that we need to be good ambassadors to the community, but if we don't know what is going on, if we're not consulted with, and if there isn't a set of criteria that we can use to explain to our residents what this state of emergency means, and if we can't tell them when it's going to start and when it's going to end, then I think that we are making a mistake, and I won't vote for it.
All right, Mr. Bluen, let's, let's go.
Okay, if we can handle the, some of these housekeeping items first.
Yes.
I'll address the first one, which is resolution number 20 dash, 2020, so, under Florida state statute and our ordinance, it does allow the chief of police to declare a declaration of state of emergency, oops, shut my phones off there.
Oops.
This always happens. So it grants him that authority, again, under state statute and under, under our ordinance, which gives him some set guidelines to operate in an emergency fashion, one of those things that we can implement as a curfew, as we did. In order for us to extend that declaration of emergency by Florida state statute, we then need to bring it to the policy body, or is, is exactly the city council, to further and extend the declaration of emergency. I think we are in, in a state of emergency, we do need to be able to exercise some of those things, like the curfew and, and other measures to protect the community. I was planning on addressing some of the things as it relates to the messaging that we sent out yesterday in my broader situation report, and the purpose and the reason and why we are doing those things. I would suggest that in order, in extending the declaration of emergency, that you give us some flexibility, so we're not having to reconvene here every so many days, because you've, you've, you've put the, the parameters are too short. I could assure you all that the town government will not be issuing a lockdown, a quarantine, a shelter-in-place without some consultation from the members of the, from the mayor and the council. Again, if you allow me the opportunity to wait to address that, I prefer to do it at that time.
Okay, I'm going to read resolution 2120.
I have some questions. Look, we have to be able to ask questions, Donnie, I know we want to get out of here, but this is a big deal, so I'd like.
I understand, Julie, and if, if it's all right, if I read the resolution.
Sure, sure.
And then we can go from there.
Okay.
As I would if Skip were here. Resolution 2120, resolution of the town council of the town of Palm Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, concurring with the request of the town's chief of police to extend the 72-hour time limit relating to the chief's declaration of the existence of a state of emergency within the corporate limits of the town to a period of time deemed appropriate by the chief of police for the declaration of public emergency to be terminated, providing for an effective date.
I move readobbed a resolution.
I wanted to ask some questions first, before we start doing the adoption.
2120, 20.
We can make the mo, we can make the motion and a second, and then go, and then go to comments.
Second.
Okay, Julie, comments.
I have comments, too.
I have a couple of questions, Kirk. Could you explain, and I know it's in the ordinance, but for the public that's listening, what acts may the police chief take under this emergency?
As I stated earlier, can result in the establishment of curfews, the prohibition, sale, distribution of alcoholic beverages, prohibition and possession of, on any person in a public place, of any portable container containing an alcoholic beverage, the closing of places of public assemblages, within designated exceptions, the prohibition of the sale or other transfer possession without consideration of gasoline, other flammable or combustible liquid, although, or except delivery in a tank properly affixed to an operable motor-driven vehicle, bike, scooter, boat, airplane, and the necessary propulsion thereof, and the prohibition of possession in a public. prohibition of possession in a public place of any portable container containing gasoline or any other flammable or combustible liquid.
Would you be able to put, from the way it sounds, could you put a shelter in place under this, or would you have to wait for the council?
Not under the.
Under this ordinance.
Not under the resolution that's being presented today.
Right.
No.
So that's the point. I just want to be sure everybody knows this is very limited. And so Lou, in your comments about the shelter hearing, they can't, this is not allowing them to do that. This is much more confined to the areas that Kirk talked about. The other thing I would like to say in what you were talking about, Kirk, and do we have Skip? I thought Skip was going to be on the phone.
He's on the phone.
He's on the phone.
I'd like to ask him how we can do these things telephonically, because everyone I know who has businesses, they're putting thousands of people onto telephonic transmissions so people can vote and all of that. Does our government not allow it? How do we get our government to allow it? I think it's insane as a council member.
It's a charter change.
It's a charter change. So it's a charter change for us, but not for the rest of the state.
It is.
I believe it would require a charter change, but it'd also require a change in the state law the way it's currently written.
That's what I thought. So I'm wondering if there is a way to get to the AG, if we can all get together. I mean, come on, if one person here had Corona, it could take out the entire council and our town manager, and also people that are so important, our chief of police, our chief of fire. We have got to be able to do telephonic conversations. We can have the public listen in, but we should not be forced to come into these rooms. Again, like I said earlier, they are saying that it can last in a room if someone sneezes between 30 minutes and three hours. So I don't know who was in here before, I don't know who was after, but the state should be protecting us, and I hope that the AG and Governor DeSantis get together and make and find a way to override, whether it's a charter or whether it's a state law, to allow us to keep everyone, including ourselves, safe and our families.
And if I could make a comment on that, that has already been addressed. The mayor did send a letter to the governor requesting this change under these circumstances that we're facing at the time. It's not unique to us. Other cities have made these requests to the governor as well to change the state law to allow us conducting these meetings, so, and without being violation of sunshine in a video conference or some other way. But that's not the resolution that's, if we could go back to the resolution that we're discussing here today. I don't want people to be confused that are listening that has, what you had brought up has nothing to do with the resolution.
Well, it does because I'm standing here.
That's being brought forward for extension today. That's a whole nother issue that is being addressed. But we cannot independently operate any differently than already has been established under state of Florida rules. Skip did call the attorney general on our behalf, who confirmed quite differently, but I stated, but the summation of the information, the same, and gave us guidance how not to proceed and how to proceed, even under these unusual times.
And we're not putting a time limit on this.
Not according to.
He asked, town manager Julie asked for flexibility.
And I agree with Lou. I think we could do a 30-day, or I just, I don't like an unlimited time limit. I would love to write a time limit in. We can reconvene. And I also do think, and I agree with Lou, while I know decisions were being made, we of course get phone calls right away, so if a drastic measure is taken, if something is changed, I do think it's important that the council know before an alert goes out. I think that can be an issue, and I know that goes, but that's part of this, and part of what I would ask is that if this decision is made, that the council is called, so that we are prepared.
Councilwoman Ariskoff.
Councilwoman.
Councilwoman.
I may feel like a man.
If, I just want to sort of refocus on the resolution that's being presented at hand. I could address all those comments, and I might as well address it now.
But this is part of the resolution for me.
If you brought it up.
Yep.
On the alert. So we're operating in emergency mode. Anyone that's never worked in emergency management, I fully am respective. It's hard to comprehend. As the incident commander, I am presented with tasking a lot of things. I'm the air traffic controller of getting our team assembled, getting them on task, carrying out our mission. It's ever-changing, have to read luminous amounts of information, and they then come back to me what's decisions that need to be made. So I ask you for a little bit of patience as it relates to that, and I will, but to your point, it's a fair point. It's been brought up to me by other council members as well. The alert in particular yesterday, we should have, you know, in hindsight, sent that out to the mayor and the council to kind of give them a heads up and give them the purpose. So in a few minutes, when I give my, hopefully at the end of the meeting, I can discuss what the purpose was and what we're doing here. But if I'm going to ask that you approve the extension of the declaration of emergency, I'm respectful of your comments that did not put it on end, did do it out, some limits and your involvement.
Well, and I think that's why I brought it up. This does have to do with.
I would just ask, not, you know, put such narrow parameters on it that we have to keep doing this.
That we're informed first?
I'm sorry?
What I wanted in this, this does pertain to the ordinance, that at least we are informed, send an email, I don't care what it is, a text, that you're about to make a change. I think that is important here, because if you're making a decision, and I get it, Kirk, you've been doing a phenomenal job, Maggie, you have too, but I would like to see in this something that at least says the council will be alerted should you be making a huge change.
I'm not sure that's actually part of this ordinance. I mean, and I don't.
Well, this ordinance extends it, so.
No, it has nothing, you're conflating the two things.
There are two different things.
I'm just asking today, do you agree that we are in a state of emergency?
Yes.
That's the first question.
Okay, got it.
And do you agree to extend it? And for what period of time do you want to extend it? That's all this is. If you don't think that the town should be operating in a state of emergency, then that's for all, for you all to decide.
I don't think we've declared a state of emergency.
Lou, we have declared it. We declared it the other day.
We declared it already. But you need to be on mic. No one can hear you, Lou, please.
Let me handle my own communications, and you handle yours.
Okay, so let's go back. Kirk has asked two questions. Do we agree that we are in a state of emergency?
Yes.
Yes. It's been declared.
Mr. Crampton, do you agree?
When was it declared?
72 hours ago.
By?
Monday, town manager.
It was declared on Monday.
Yes.
You declared it. And does this?
Well, actually, it's declared by Nick, is it not?
It's declared by the chief of police.
It was declared by the chief of police, and the federal government and the governor of the state also made their own declarations.
And there was no time limit, or was it 72 hours? Is that it?
It's, the declaration, we're allowed under ordinance to, or actually, under state statute, to continue under that declaration of emergency for a period of 72 hours. Before the end of the 72 hours, we have to bring it back to the town council for an extension.
So this relates to all of the pronouncements you've made thus far, but not to something that could be made in the future like shelter-in-place?
That is not something that I would not do without some consultation.
So you're asking for authority to do shelter-in-place as part of this?
No, it's not part, that is not part of this ordinance.
It's not part of the declaration of emergency.
Why isn't it possible to put an end date on this state of emergency? And why isn't it possible to do, time over time, phone conversations or phone consultations with the council?
All right, let me, let me be real crystal, crystal clear. The phone conversations and how we're conducting the meetings, town council meetings, there are specific rules that we need to, all municipalities and governments in the state of Florida need to follow.
I understand sunshine.
Right, exactly. It has nothing to do with the resolution that we are being presented. That's a separate issue that we are addressing with the governor, and hoping for a rule change. The declaration of emergency just allow, you grants, the town council grants the town to, and the chief of police in this case, to extend that declaration of emergency. You could put a time restraint on that. It has nothing to do with shelter-in-place. It specifically has to do with the statute, Florida state statute 870-045 that explains those discretionary emergency measures that is in your backup. I just read them just a few moments ago. I don't know if that assists you or clarifies.
That helps. Kirk, I have done emergency management, too. In Massachusetts, I had charge of the Chelsea fire in the aftermath, and I've dealt with chemical releases at chemical plants that caused towns to shut down. The only point I'm making with this is that communications to the public is absolutely crucial. The more people don't know, and the more people don't understand, the more rumors there are, and the more disjointed the response is. The fact that I was somewhat in the dark, and it might be partially my fault, but the fact that I was somewhat in the dark on this is not a good thing. I'll take responsibility for my behavior, but I do think there maybe could have been some better performance at the town level, too. I still feel that some sort of time limit needs to be inserted into this law, and I do also feel that some kind of consultation process, and if it has to take in sunshine, it takes in sunshine because the public needs to understand what's going on here, especially if it's going to be shelter-in-place, and especially if we do shelter-in-place and West Palm and Gulf Stream and all these other towns do not. So I'm still holding out for amendments to the ordinance that would allow a time certain and a consultation.
Okay, well, yeah, Bobby, you seconded the motion, so.
Yeah, I made the motion, but I will amend it for 60 days or to the May town council meeting, I think. I don't know how many days that is. I think that sounds very good. But that at least puts an end date, and we can extend it after that, or it will sunset if we don't.
I'm okay with that.
May you, it was your second.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, you all, you're going to have to change the title. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So what you'll do is, or it says, declaration of the existence of a state of emergency within the corporate limits of the town for a period to extends to, and then put your date, and delete appropriate by the chief of police, whereupon the declaration of public emergency shall be reconsidered by the council, providing for an effective date.
Can you repeat that one time? Did somebody get that?
I got it. Okay. Yeah, I got it. So it's the town to a, until, not to, I'll just say to the town, until the May 2020 town council meeting. May, what is it? You want me to look that up? It's the second Tuesday in May.
For a period of time.
For a period of time that will end on the.
May 12th.
May 12th, 2020.
At which time it could be reconsidered.
Town council meeting.
At which time the town council.
Yes.
At which time.
At which time the town council will address the need, if any, for an extended declaration of public emergency.
Okay, at which time the town council will address the need for an extension of the declaration if necessary.
Yeah, I'll accept that.
Okay.
I think it was if necessary for a public emergency.
So Bobby, are you willing to change that, your motion?
No, I'm willing to second that.
Okay.
And then I have one more question.
Okay.
Under this, because Kirk, I know you read everything, you could not close down all restaurants, you could not close down all hotels. This is more limited to curfew and all the things you read. Is that correct?
Yes, that has.
I'm just trying to make sure everybody knows.
Everything you mentioned right now has nothing to do with the resolution that you all hopefully have proven of that.
Great. I'm just making sure the public knows what we can and cannot do. Thank you.
Okay. Pat, if you call the question, please.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Ms. Seidman?
Yes.
Ms. Ariskoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crampton?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Next item.
The next emergency ordinance, 08-2020, addresses the need because of the circumstances that we're under right now with the cancellation of many meetings. It's a housekeeping item that extends the period by a period of 30 days deadlines that the council and its boards and commissions are now under to act upon applications submitted to the council and to its boards and commissions.
Okay, I'm going to read the ordinance by title. Emergency ordinance number 8-2020, an emergency ordinance of the town council of the town of Palm Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, extending by a period of 30 days deadlines for the council and its boards and commissions to act upon applications submitted to the council and its boards and commissions based upon the declaration of an emergency related to the coronavirus and the consequent cancellation of meetings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing ineffective dates.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 8-2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
And do you want me to explain it, Kirk?
Not if it's approved.
Okay.
Ms. Ariskoff?
Yes, but I do think at least for the public who are listening, they should know this is for applications that go into ARCOM, LPC, and other areas under ordinance. They must be heard within 30 days. This will allow us to extend it 30 days.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
It was Ms. Seidman.
Ms. Seidman?
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Crampton?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Yes. Now, let's go to Mr. Bluen and your update.
Sure. I'm going to give you a situation update on what the town's plan is and what the response is. I'd ask you, just give me a few minutes to get through this information, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions or concerns that you may have. So the town staff has been meeting daily for several weeks, refining our emergency operation plans in preparation for a catastrophic event due to COVID-19, or otherwise referred to as coronavirus. We have a crystal ball, and that is what they've experienced in Asia and Europe and now in the state of Washington. They've seen this grow exponentially fast with a high morbidity rate. Americans shouldn't expect any different results. I don't understand why they would think that the results would be different. There is no treatment for it now. They're experimenting with a number of treatments that may help assist in the health care of these individuals, and they're working on some vaccines, but everything that I've read, it may be a year out before that is in place. I have been closely monitoring the social psychology and behavior in relation to this virus. I observed in some cases panic and in many cases disbelief, refusal to believe or not quite grasping the serious we are now facing. The general public is overrelying on the numbers of reported cases, which are unintentionally inaccurate for these reasons. It is reported that upwards towards 80% have experienced mild or asymptomatic. In some of those cases, in a study that I read last night, or in many of those cases rather, particularly in the younger population, their immune system is quietly fighting the virus, and therefore, they're not showing any symptoms, but does not mean they're not affected. Most of us, we have some staff members that are on self-quarantine right now. They don't meet the narrow criteria for testing. They're all, everyone seems to be faring pretty well, isolated in their home, taking precautions for their other team members and their family members. And then recently, there is, there was very limited, in many cases, no test kits. The doctors told them just to kind of shelter at home, and they start experiencing need for emergency medical care, to call 911 or, and follow those instructions. So I point that out because I think that too many people were overrelying on the confirmed cases that are being reported. You have to understand, that's not unintentional. Those numbers could be 10 times, the actual infection rate could be 10 times than what's being reported today. And to Maggie's point, I can be infected, she can be infected, and this virus will spread at a very fast rate. In fact, the math has been done on the spread of these cases in other countries, and it's multiplying, it's doubling, the infection rate is doubling, confirmed infection rate is doubling, I should point out, every two to three days. We are going. We are going to experience the same results. As it relates to the test kits, 600,000 test kits have made their way to Florida as of Monday, and they've been distributed throughout the state of Florida over the past few days. Because these test kits are being distributed throughout this week, I expect to see those confirmed cases decline really fast. It does take a few days, once you're tested, to get those test results back. So there might be a little bit of a lag time. We have declared a declaration of emergency, and I have activated our EOC. We are operating under our emergency response protocols and under an incident command system, which is incident management with defined and control structure. Our emergency personnel are used to working within stressful environments, or police and fire departments have the equipment and training to respond and react according to our protocols, which are fluid. As a society, and we are not there yet, but the panic and anxiety will creep in. And then it becomes controlled chaos. This is actually the calm period. We haven't reached the chaotic period yet. We want people to socially isolate as much as they can. And if they cannot, practice social distancing, at least six feet apart, just like we're practicing today. Be hypervigilant about your hygiene, to wash your hands for 20 seconds. Don't touch your eyes, nose, and mouth. You know, try to prevent infection, mitigate the spread. That's what this is all about, that's what the entire strategy is about, not just Town of Palm Beach strategy, our state, our country strategy, and the world strategy is just the same. You might have heard a lot about flattening the curve because what they've experienced in these other countries, and what we are about to experience is there won't be enough medical resources. There won't be enough doctors, nurses. They won't get infected, they will have to quarantine. There won't be enough supplies to handle the influx of new cases. You know, respirators, beds, I know some people think that are not used to working in emergency management, that they refer to, well, we could take over the school, or we can take over hotels. It's not a space issue, that's not the issue at all. Of course, we can do that, they're not equipped for emergency medical care. It's really a resource issue. So I want to make that clear, it's not a space issue, it's a resource issue. We do expect this to, again, I'll probably repeat myself, to vertically climb very fast and in a very short period of time. We'll outpace the resources, the health resources that we have to combat this. I'm gonna offer an educated opinion. The United States needs to enact bold decisions immediately, which includes a lockdown, a quarantine, shelter in place, whatever it is that you want to call it. When you look at the curves at the other countries, they only stop climbing vertically. Again, as I stated earlier, double on every two to three days and start to flatten out after they've enacted these measures. Maybe there are reasons that I don't understand why there is a delay and what I see to be the inevitable. But I hope the leadership comes from outside of Town of Palm Beach fast. We are limited in what we can do, and I will address that. So our town actions, our police and fire will continue to function in a modified new normal. And that modified new normal only means they're practicing social distancing, but they still have to do their job. The fire department is well-equipped with the protective gear at this moment. There are great concerns that at some point they may run out of protective gear in an extended response to this virus. But at the moment, they do have the gear, they have the training. They have been practicing dry runs of what this might look like prior to the virus getting here to the town. So I applaud the public safety efforts for that. The police department, by nature of the job, is a little more exposed. By doing their job, there is public contact, at least to some degree. But they are practicing the protocols of the distancing. They do have some equipment, they have, you know, the wipes and protective gear to protect themselves as well. But we're trying to maintain those resources for when we really need them. At some point, we are gonna have more personnel go out because they've, or exhibiting these symptoms or have tested positive, and they're gonna have to remain in isolation for a period of 14 days. We've been working through the protocols for each department and identifying essential and non-essential functions of the town. As stated earlier, public safety will continue to operate. Public works is an essential function of the town, the trash will continue to get picked up. At some point, that may change, meaning we may decide to pick it up, you know, two or three days a week. I don't know what that looks like at this moment because it is a very fluid situation. Right now, we have the resources, everyone seems to be in good health, and those services are gonna continue. The other parts of government, you know, finance and human resources and some of those support administrative functions to this large machine, have the ability to work from home without interrupting our services. We've been preparing that for several weeks. They have the computers and the access to tap into our system here. And we will be testing that and make sure we work out any kinks within the next 24 hours. We have been routinely meeting via teleconferencing and other normal traditional methods, by phone, email. The town took decisive and bold actions to send a clear message. This was done strategically to wake up our local and our greater community into desired reaction and action. No plan to fight this virus can work without awareness, and I believe that's what we've been trying to do, in some ways, in a bold way or controversial way. But it can't work without active participation from the public. The public, the greater, the masses, need to start acting. We expect people to become confused, and all this was talked about weeks ago. We know people are gonna be confused, and we know in some cases people are gonna be angry. I know that there's many people in the community that do not agree, and this was expected with our actions. We have people in this room that don't agree with those actions. We understand that, we knew that would happen. We are developing and implementing plans to protect the 20% that's gonna need medical care. We talked about the 80% that's experiencing mild and/or asymptomatic. There's 20% that are probably gonna need some medical care. 5% of those will become critically ill, and some of those will be fighting for their life. This is what they experienced in all the other areas. I don't know why we would expect anything different. This is a classic iceberg situation. It's a lot bigger than we can imagine. Everything we do today will seem not big enough by next week. We remind people to be mindful, respectful, and kind to each other during this time, and I will keep repeating that. We will get through this. Although we said, we did send some alarming messages, that was done strategically to get people's attention. We certainly got their attention. We got a flood of opinions into our town's email system and website, and I know some of you did as well. There's a lot of opinions on this. We will overcommunicate the best that we can. We will continue to push out alerts and messages to keep people informed. We recognized very early on that this is not gonna be perfect. We are operating at lightning speed right now, and we are gonna make mistakes. I ask you all to be patient with our emergency staff. And, you know, the team has great attitudes, we have a lot of experience, and we're gonna do the best we can. We encourage people to email their questions into a new link that we have set up. It's questions@townofpalmbeach.com. And at 3 o'clock each day, we will conduct a live meeting broadcast over the internet with myself and other members of the emergency team to provide a situation update, information that we feel that will be useful to the community, and answer some of the questions that have been asked. We will post the answers to these questions, some of them are repetitive, to our website. So in some cases, it may be useful for members of the community to go to the website first so they can get some of that information. I did release, just prior to the start of this meeting, a message to the community as to why we took some of the actions that we did, particularly the alert that was considered alarming to the community. I encourage those that are listening and those that are here today. I did email you, I did take the guidance that I received last night. I tried to give you guys the heads up, at least, you're getting it at the same time. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me, you know, during these very trying times. But in the same breath, I do ask, as the incident commander and the person who's trying to manage a lot of parts, to be respectful of my time. Under normal circumstances in this community, I am your conduit, and I am the person that you contact, and I, you know, consult with you on a regular basis. I don't have the time right now to consult with all the people in the community that are contacting me regularly, including while I've been sitting here, and all of you, all seven people, to discuss the actions that we are about to take and that we are taking. The team needs my guidance, and there are lots of decisions every day that need to be made, hundreds of them. I thank you.
Okay. Kirk, I just want to say that you and your team have done an incredible job. And I know Bobby and Julie and I and Maggie all have elderly family members, I think it's fair to call them elderly. And our concern is really for their safety. When you see that Italy is having to choose who to keep, who to help survive, and I realize, my mom won't be on that list. Her plug will be pulled. Julie, Bobby, and your uncle, you know, so. And I think that's what the community has to understand. It's not about us, because we tend to be healthy. I know Maggie's talking about my breathing issues. But we have to protect our residents. Our goal is to keep them all alive. Literally, I just looked at my phone. The Palm Beach Post has said that the number of reported cases in Palm Beach County went from 29 to 230 in less than 24 hours. This is critical, and I know it's painful for some of our residents. But remember, we're thinking about all of our residents. And look, my mom's 80-something.
Mine, too, but I'm not telling.
So we have to be really, really, it's not about us. It's about keeping our residents safe and alive, and that's my job. That's what I was elected to do, and that's what I intend to do, to the best of my ability. And Kirk and your team, you are a crisis management expert. I'm gonna get out of your way. Tell me what I need to do, and I think we all feel the same way. Tell me what we need to do to make your job easier, and go for it. So I'm gonna run down the line, and then we'll adjourn the meeting, and I'll start with Bobby.
Okay, I'm gonna do this quickly. I'm gonna read a letter from a doctor in Seattle who's in the middle of this fight in Seattle, which was one of the first and hardest-hit cities in our nation. I've known him for 35 years, he's one of the most prominent primary care physicians in the city. He's heavily involved with the Gates Foundation and the University of Washington on dealing with this virus in King County, which includes the greater metropolitan area of Seattle, 2.2 million people. And last night, he wrote me, and this is what he said, "And I think it's important for people to understand, these people are three weeks ahead of us. They are in it, in the middle of this." "Bobby, per our discussion tonight, things have changed dramatically in Seattle in the last week since we spoke, for the worse. What was a highly worrisome trend in our regional COVID-19 cases, hospitalizations, deaths, is now accelerating. Our many hospitals are filling up, our ICU beds, ventilator availability is tight, and we expect to be overwhelmed in the next one to two weeks. In my discussion with the Gates Foundation Group that is working with the University of Florida Medical Center on new strategies for testing and treating COVID-19, their models predicted exactly what is unfolding here, with much worse to come in the next few weeks. The Seattle Bellevue experience is unfortunately following the same expansion curve as the Italian debacle. I participated in a video conference last week with three of the leading Chinese physician scientists, along with 245 leading American physicians, scientists, hospital administrators, and public health officials who oversaw their country's response to COVID-19 in Wuhan, Shanghai, and China as a whole. Their study of the explosion of this disease in Wuhan allowed them to completely control the outbreak in nearby Shanghai. By aggressively restricting human interaction in Shanghai, a city of 30 million people, they successfully limited the number of COVID-19 cases from a predicted 300,000 to 800,000 to only 350,000. The call to flatten the curve is not just a chant, it's the one measure that every community can and should immediately deploy to delay that community's spread of the virus. Without aggressive restriction of human interaction, many lives and their families and businesses will be unnecessarily lost. Good luck, be bold. No matter how painful it seems now, I doubt you'll regret any measures you take to slow this pandemic in your community." This letter almost exactly reflects what our town leader has just said, and I hope that's not missed by anyone. So my position is not changed at all. It differs, obviously, from some of my colleagues, and it's similar to some of my colleagues. And I think this was a reflection of our community and our state and our nation. Thank you.
Take Julie, I'll go last.
No, go ahead, Julie. Go ahead, Lou.
Yeah, with you. I'll start off by saying that I am part of the target population. I'm 81 years old, so perhaps the plug might be pulled on me at some point. I'm about the same age as your mother, Donnie, so clearly no one wants this situation to work more than I. But we are a democracy, and we can be persuaded and convinced to do the right thing through data and good leadership. We're not China. This is what I've been trying, that's the point I've been trying to make. We are fortunate to have Kirk with his experience in law enforcement and his tough-minded approach to solving problems. We're fortunate to have him where he is. And I'm happy to follow him and whatever suggestions he has to make. But I feel that I should be consulted with, just as I think the rest of you do. It is not possible to mitigate this hazard, I understand that. The resources in the medical system we have are just not there. So all we can do is to contain it, and as Kirk said, flatten the curve. I think with this resolution, we have put in some safeguards for our residents to know that this process will not go on forever. It will not be dependent on just a single person, but it will be a result of a consultative process involving the elected representatives of the Town of Palm Beach in May. So I'm pleased with the way this process has worked out.
Julie, Maggie, and then let's.
The two questions that I had asked Kirk. One is, are you looking at, which a lot of residents have called me about, are you looking at if the other hotels do not close like the Breakers did? Are you looking at perhaps doing that? Because people are coming from all these infected areas and coming to us, living in those hotels. That's number one.
So we've made strong recommendations, and that's all we can do at this time, is try to create awareness, provide them a plan, try to provide some direction. But you'll probably hear me say over and over and over again, no government plan, including ours, can work without public participation. You lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. We can't mandate that they close down. Again, like you stated earlier, I do applaud the Breakers. I've known Paul Ione for many years, and I respect his leadership, and his bold actions does not surprise me. I would hope that the other establishments follow suit. But ironically enough, received an email, and I think you may have been the recipient on that as well, you may have forwarded it to me, from one hotel proprietor that was pretty.
Unhappy.
Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, I think that's putting it mildly with our actions thus far, and this is all expected. This happens in every emergency situation, and, you know, the best that we can do here is, you know, sift through the information with the team and make our best decisions. We strongly believe you are making the best decisions. Our word choice could have been different from time to time, our delivery method could have been better from time to time, but we're doing the most with the time that we have available to us in any given day.
And then just my comments. All I want to add at the end of this is I am completely with my colleagues, or most of them, I should say, and with Kirk, and Maggie, you've done an extraordinary job, as I hear. We can't talk because of sunshine, and by the way, Kirk, most states don't have sunshine, so they can be telephonically doing this. But I want to reiterate, and everybody just put that news on for 10 minutes, you know, people need to take this seriously, and we as a town need to get ahead of the curve. We've seen what's happened in New York, we've seen what's happened in Italy, we've seen what is happening in Seattle, outside of Seattle and Kirkland, and I think that we all have to be very mindful. And if we have to put strict measures in place, we have to put strict measures in place, that is to protect our citizenry. And I agree with the mayor, and we have a wonderful mayor who's working very hard, but I hope that some of the other mayors and some of the other people that are in charge of making decisions will take some of the bold actions that our town is taking because we can't do it alone, and they really need to be looking at this too and protecting us so that we don't end up in the situation that we're heading towards, which is Italy. And again, I just thank the staff, I thank everybody who has been working so hard around the clock to protect us. As Bobby said, there are now five cases that will be expected to climb, and we need to self-isolate. I, the last thing I would say, the reason I have to self-isolate right now is because, as Kirk had mentioned, we did have a staff member who became sick, and all of us were present, and that's the problem with these meetings that aren't telephonic. And I'm going to keep saying that, and I know that I called you, I know that we sent letters to the AG and to the governor, but it is time, at least during a crisis, to allow us to speak by phone when we are dealing with the coronavirus. Everything else I get, and we can do something where the public can listen, but we are all being put at risk in our state, which is the only state that has the sunshine law. I agree with the sunshine law, but not in coronavirus situations where things change minute to minute, and we are now put in a room, and we could all be exposed to it, which by the way, would knock out our council and our town manager. So with that, I thank everybody for taking this seriously, for self-isolating. I hope the businesses that have not stopped doing what was recommended, the clubs that they really moved to recommend, as Bobby said and as in the letter, this could become a situation and will become a situation if we do not take the things, the precautions that we need to protect our town. I thank everybody up here for coming in, and I especially thank Donnie, our president, Maggie for your work, and Kirk and our staff.
Maggie, I'm going to let you wrap it up. Oh, wait, Skip?
Before you adjourn, I have what I think is an important afterthought, and that relates to the resolution, that you have extended the state of the emergency until your May meeting. I think we should include language which says, unless earlier terminated by the chief, so as to give that discretion to the chief. You've taken away the discretion and declared the emergency until May. I think it's important to include language in that title which says, unless earlier terminated by the chief of police.
Good point.
So shall we amend the...
Bobby, are you willing to amend the motion?
I am, and Skip, I'm going to amend motion 2120 to include the language that while this is extended until the May, is it May 12th meeting?
Yes.
Unless it's terminated earlier by the chief of police, to be added.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Skip.
Thanks, thanks.
Maggie, are you willing to second that?
Do we need to vote again?
Yes, give a second. Yeah, we do, okay.
Vote on the amendment, yes.
We do, will.
Okay, Pat, call the question, please, please.
Who made the motion?
Bobby.
Bobby.
Yes. And then Maggie, second.
Yes.
Yes, second, yes.
Ms. Ascoff?
Yes.
Mr. Crampton?
Aye.
And Ms. Moore?
Yes. That being said...
Okay, a few remarks for you. I've gotten a lot of thank yous on this, but I really need to tell you, it's the last time I'm going to see you physically in a room, and you've all been a part of it. It wasn't just me, it's just because of my background, which does lend itself to this. But all of you have been very much a part of it, and I thank you, and you supported it right from the get-go. You were right on it. Bobby wrote to me, you got 100% support, and that was in the early stages. I also want to point out that if you need to understand, those of you who are still in the world of magical thinking, if you need to understand about this very virulent, contagious, it-can-kill-you virus, then I want to point you to two things. First, you need to understand what flattening of the curve is. Bobby did a great job writing it up, and everybody was all hands on deck last weekend, trying to do whatever they can to get information out, and I asked Bobby if she would do that. She did. It is on our website, it's got a great, there's a great explanation of that, and what it means and what you have to do. So please pay attention to that. Donnie, you've been terrific the way you've handled this, so I really want, you've been right on it, and you've been calm and keeping even me calm sometimes. And Julie, you've brought up every legal issue that you could, which is important, and I think that we do need relief from the Attorney General. I think the Attorney General has to stop engaging. Yes, Skip, I'm going to say this in magical thinking. And Lou, I understand absolutely the issues that you have raised, and it's important for us to hear them because that's what the residents are feeling. They're feeling, oh my gosh, what's going on, why are they doing this? So it is important. Everyone's on a little bit of a timeline here, and some are going to lag behind, and some are going to be forward in front of it. I think that the most important thing here is that we don't look back and say, I wish we had done this, I wish we had done that. You don't need to wait for the federal or the state government or the municipal, Palm Beach County, to start right now with isolating yourselves. And that's a message to the clubs that are still open and still encouraging, by being open, you're encouraging people. That's my opinion. Same, the restaurants too, let's get on board here. We saw many, Buchanan was the first to close, good for them. Breakers closed all their restaurants, good for them. So, and they're doing delivery service, curbside pickup.
Science Center closed.
Science Center closed. We canceled things a week, week and a half ago, lots of things were canceled. I also want to point out, I really need to say this, we are so fortunate that our mayor is so connected to all of the outside government officials. She's been in contact with them, and I think that you're going to see that things are moving quickly. I said, pay attention to the language. Pay attention to the language, you will see it. There's a shift in the doctors. And lastly, before I give a little message to all of you, is that Kirk, you never fail us, you're protecting us, you're doing what you can do, and I applaud you, and I appreciate it, we all appreciate it. You've taken some very bold, very bold steps, starting on Monday of this week, and I'm glad you did. You've actually saved lives by what you did, by shutting down the beaches, by having a curfew where young people could not congregate on St. Patrick's Day, and you are continuing to do that with the message that you sent out yesterday. And what you read to us this morning was so well-delivered, and you're calm, but things, the calm is going to end, as you said. We're in the calm period, the storm is about to come, you're all going to be shocked, and I know you're going to be shocked, but we will try to stay in touch with all of you. You need to take this very, very seriously. The doctor that Bobby's talking about, he's in the middle of it. Mass General, they're in the middle of it. Doctors are in the ICU, their friends are, their friends are intubated on ventilators. This is not a pretty scene, it is not a good death. Listen to the Italian doctor, pull that thing up, New York Times podcast, and it will show you what can happen if you don't listen to what we're saying today. So please, take this seriously. We'll do whatever we can to help you through this. We have a lot of plans, even the council. Donnie has teed up the great Beth Walton at the United Way, Julie is very interested in helping people. Lou, you've got, you've got your hands, you've got a lot on your hands, I know you do. We have a very, very vulnerable population. So don't get sick, as Lois Frankel said to me three weeks ago, Maggie, don't get sick. Don't get sick, stay isolated from people, and we'll get through this. Thank you, Kirk. Thanks, everybody.
Kirk, if we can wrap up, and then I'll call for an adjournment so we can go home.
Yes, I just want to state that our very bold, controversial message yesterday certainly worked, it got people's attention, and that was the intent. It was not to panic people, it was to create awareness, to get people personally to make their plan, for businesses to make arrangements, what I believe is inevitable. And that's not for a town shutdown, most likely a federal shutdown and a state shutdown. I feel an obligation to lay out the plan for people, to help lead them, but of course, we have to work with our other local county and state and federal partners in coordination for that. Again, remind people of being kind, mindful, and respectful to each other as anxieties start to rise, and go on to our town's website, click on the COVID-19 link, there's some good information on there, and daily we'll be having a meeting, and that meeting will happen at 3 o'clock today, where I can provide a situation update to the community and go through the questions that have been sent in to us and provide some answers that we hope that will be helpful to the community.
Will those be recorded?
And our goal is to over-communicate as much as we can within the timeframe that we have available. Yes, that will be recorded and posted to our website. And we will also, as I stated earlier, write out the questions and answers and post them to our website as well, as a resource for the community. Thank you.
All right. That being said, let's motion to adjourn.
Second, and God bless everyone, your families, your friends, and this council, and mayor, and staff.
All right, stay home, everybody.